Bobby, so we're just going to pause for a moment. Okay, so. First name, I believe, is Justin. I'm not sure. Sir, could you please tell me your last name? Backer, that's what I thought. Okay, please come to the podium, just state your name, address if you'd like, please. In just a three-minute time interval, we'll be exercised for this.
Sure. My name is Justin Backer. I'm the owner of 5419 Rosedale here in King George. I'm also the owner of PBM Professional Building Maintenance in Stafford. We do a commercial custodial. We have submitted a proposal to the county for the supplemental cleaning options that you might need. So I just thought I'd come down this evening to answer any questions or, you know, feel any concerns that you might have about the proposal or any other options you want to discuss. Moving into next year, moving into the break, we provide service for a number of the big clients around here such as GEICO, University of Mary Washington, Mary Washington Hospital. Those are our three largest local accounts. And we've had three kids at the university with coronavirus all year long, and we've handled it really well. And everyone over there has just done a fabulous job. So what's really nice about that over there and, you know, I hope to see here and in all places throughout the country is it's been a real cooperative network between the students, the staff, and us to really make it go smooth. The students have done just as big a part as everybody over there to keep it a clean environment and cooperate and practice social distancing and the things we need to do to keep it healthy. But other universities and school systems are shutting down, and we're rocking and rolling over there. So we take great pride in that, but also GEICO and, you know, the hospital hasn't missed a beat. So, you know, we've dealt with this on a large scale. So I thought if you needed any questions, answers, or anything I could do for you, I'd come on down.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
There will be a presentation.
Next on the list is Andreas Gonzalez. Is that correct? Please come to the podium. Oh, he's part of you? He's with you? Okay, got you. Great. All right. Yes, thank you very much, guys. So we can go to the online. Ms. Yvonne Richard? Yvonne Richard?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first, the only person I can hear is Gina. I can't hear anybody else's talking this evening online.
I don't believe anybody else has said anything yet. Do we want to do a mic check? Ms. Gonzalez, would you do a mic check, please?
Sure, can you hear me?
Ms. Hawk? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Check one, two.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
You might want to just move your mic down a little bit. Thank you. Proceed, Ms. Richard.
Thank you very much. My name is Yvonne Richard, and I'm a resident of King George County. I'm a teacher at King George Elementary School, a parent of a middle school and a high school student. During the last week, I've written several emails to the board. Thank you to those who have responded respectfully and thoughtfully. I've not heard anything at all in my, in a response from my own school board member, Mr. Collins, and I do hope that you're reading my emails and taking them into consideration. You do not have an easy job, and I'm sure many of you wish you had never signed up for this position. However, you have been elected to serve and hope that you will do to do so to the fullest of your abilities. During the last several meetings, you've mentioned that you don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. But I'm not sure that you understand that the can you're kicking down the road are the staff and the students. You must realize that every decision you make impacts our lives. On Friday, many students had to say goodbye to their teachers that they had been learning with for the first nine weeks. Many students who had been successful with virtual learning and whose parents thought they were doing the right thing and selected virtual, virtual learning for the semester now had the floor taken out from under them, and their child has a new teacher, and starting this week, they have, no longer have live specials classes. In the last 24 hours alone, I've had to explain your decisions to parents because they thought that their 100% virtual K-2 students would still have synchronous instruction for specials, but that isn't the case. And I fear what will come in the next several weeks as committees made up of school board office, staff, teachers, and parents are finally working to determine the next steps in the reopening of our district. If the transportation information presented at the last several meetings is still accurate, we don't have enough buses or drivers to support any more than K-2 learners in the four-day hybrid plan. This could mean that when we do have to open the buildings for the other students, that we'll have to uproot these K-2 learners again and change their learning environment a third time. Do any of you really think that this is going to be beneficial to the education of our students? I personally think that a plan for the entire district should be fully developed with all the what-ifs sorted out before we send our children back to the buildings. Some of you will say that virtual instruction doesn't work for all of our learners. Well, perhaps it is those students who isn't, that it isn't working for that we should be focusing on returning to school first. Is it possible they're not successful because of their lack of internet connection or a home environment, or the negative attitude they hear coming from some of the board members about virtual instruction? Some of the board has mentioned that a number of students who are failing is very concerning. However, before this pandemic, pandemic, have any of you asked about the number of students who have been failing? Is it possible that some of our teachers and students have found a way to be successful with virtual instruction simply because they've embraced positive attitudes and found a way to make it work? I would also like to point out that despite the opinions of some of the board members, I think that the teachers are part of the solution and not part of the problem. Perhaps had you listened to the teachers and students who began speaking and asking questions and requested a committee be formed in June, we wouldn't be in this boat now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Truitt. Does she know she can join?
Oh, sorry. I, can you hear me now?
Yes, go proceed, please.
I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Truitt, and I'm the new virtual kindergarten teacher at Sealston Elementary School. For anyone who may be wondering, I was asked to do this. I wasn't told I had to, and I'm glad that I can help in this way. So at Sealston, our word of the week is perspective. As you can probably guess, this assignment has changed my perspective. I'm extremely torn because I want to support my school and my county, but I still believe that bringing students back to the buildings is an unsafe choice. This is as divisive of an issue as any of the others facing us, and it seems the county is as torn as I am. I've heard people speak clearly on both sides, and both sides have excellent and valid points. However, I personally still strongly believe that bringing students back to the buildings will do more harm than good, particularly, particularly given the current nationwide rise in COVID. However, the plan we have in front of us is the answer that we have to work with, and that is what I'd like to address tonight. To make this work as safely as possible, I would ask for two things. First, parents, please ask your children to wear masks. I know some of you don't agree with this, but in order to keep everyone safe, please do it anyway. We all have to make compromises for the good of others. If you need the words to use with your children, try saying this. Honey, I know you've heard me say that I don't think masks are good. Let's go ahead and wear them anyway since it's the rule. Second, to all adults, please wear a mask when you're around others. In the Freelance Star on Sunday, an article about the use of protections talks about layering safeguards like masks, social distancing, and hand washing. And it stated that your mask is your basic layer. Please let's take that to heart and wear masks whenever possible. Finally, and more generally, to everyone who can hear me, please try hard to listen to each other and truly hear each other. We all have valid points, and none of us are totally right or totally wrong. If we listen with open ears, then we will be better able to hear one another. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Truitt. Tamara Gillespie? Did I say your last first name correctly? I apologize.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, but you have a echo. If you could please just turn off the mic on your computer or the sound. Turn it off on your computer.
All right, got that fixed.
Thank you.
All right. So I wrote a email last, beginning of last week at the end of the meeting. Gina responded, oh, my name's Tamara Gillespie. Gina responded and asked why I think other schools get to open, but we can't. And my response directly to her, which I think is important to say, is other schools planned out. They're doing a two-day program for the students, not the one that we're doing, which is four days. I asked some friends who I know go to Spotsy and their children are in school. They have 10 to 13 kids max. They are spaced out very far apart. The parents are happy with that, and they also have air quality controls that are already taken care of. They made sure that was done before they ever sent their kids back. Prince William County, they're only going to be doing this month kindergarten spaced out, two days a week again, that won't move into more classes until later, until they can feasibly make sure things are working. So they're doing the two-day week plan we had to start with that got scrapped, and that's really helping them. I'm sad that we got rid of that because that was a much safer option. We look at the virtual classes. My son's in first grade virtual. He's going to have six more students in his class. There were already too many students to begin with, but as we discussed last week, when one of the board members actually said, how can we ask the teachers to do this? It's too much. And the response was kind of just ignored, and they could do it. So now they're doing it. All the routines my son has been learning are going to be changed to accommodate this. We're looking at these, you guys keep talking about these are the youngest kids. They need these structures and routines. You're changing it all the way over, which is really upsetting. They also no longer have specials. That was a hard discussion to explain that he didn't get to have specials anymore. I know that when all this started, when the plan changed, and I do know that Benson mentioned to some board members that they were sacrificing virtual students for the vocal parents that wanted to return. Nobody should have had to been sacrificed, and that's appalling that that was the idea to sacrifice virtual students and their parents just to accommodate people that were going to complain. That's disgraceful. And now we're finding that everyone's being sacrificed, which is really, really upsetting. These parents that we're sacrificing for, I've been looking at boards, they're already complaining, as was mentioned. They're not going to have their kids wear masks. They think it's ridiculous that they have to wear masks and plexiglass. Last week, Benson mentioned that they were expecting the parents to be able to help in making sure the kids wear masks. When someone asked how we're going to make sure this is enforced, if parents are already saying they don't think kids should be wearing masks, expecting them to be enforcing it is really not okay because teachers are going to find they don't have anyone to help with that. They're going to be stuck on their own, and it's not going to make it any better. That's just dangerous. I did write some suggestions because I know there are some kids having troubles. One of the things I'd said in terms of learning was we have high school students that could be getting extra credit because I know parents are upset their high school students aren't getting the grades they want. They could be working at virtual tutoring some of these elementary school kids that need help with things that they certainly know to get extra credit for them and help these elementary school students. They could virtually do it, stay home, stay safe, and still be getting extra learning in that way. There was also discussions of socialization, and kids need that. They're not going to be getting it in the school, but we have a county that also can be assisting. It's not just up to the schools. They can make playgroups or things like that for the weekends that are socially spaced. The county can step in and help these students. It shouldn't always fall to the teachers and the schools. I think it's appalling that when I said something to a board member about what is this, the county and the social services? Why aren't they helping with some of these things that aren't just on teachers and schools? The comment was, they're overworked. They can't do all of it. Well, so are the teachers, and so are the schools. They're overworked, and it's appalling to say someone else can't do it. Make the teachers do it. We've been doing that for years. I told all of you, it's an abusive relationship. You've been giving these teachers doing it, and eventually you're going to push that button. They're not going to keep going. That means when that happens, I assume very soon, in future years, we're not going to have teachers to teach our kids, and we're all going to have a serious problem with that. One other comment, Gina said she, last week, she hadn't heard from any teachers. She'd only heard from a few vocal ones. That's offensive. You had a survey. You sent a survey. 80% of these teachers told you, many of them said they didn't want to go back. So they did speak. They did say how they felt, and that's offensive that you'd say you haven't heard from them. That's just sad. So that's all I wanted to make sure was noted.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. Great. So I believe that's it for public comment. We're going to go ahead and move on to our discussion items. First item on there is air quality enhancements. I believe we have a presentation by Joyce Colburn from Honeywell.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last meeting, you requested information regarding air quality, filtration of air in our school building. So I reached out to our partners, Honeywell. Ms. Joyce Colburn has graciously agreed to come and be in person here for you tonight. She's prepared a presentation regarding strategies related to air quality. I just wanted to say I appreciate her making sure and share the information she has with the board.
Great. Thanks so much for having me tonight. And I have my colleague, Nathan Hesberg. I think this is his first school board meeting. He's in our management training, sales training program for Honeywell. So he's here to see K through 12 in action. Um, how are we going to adapt? My goodness, these phone calls and going to these meetings. Everyone is going through this alone, I feel like. I've gone to 25 different school districts. I don't think anybody has the same plan, has the same idea. And so know that you are not alone. I know you talk to your colleagues, but you're not alone. Can you go to the next slide? I kind of like this quote, "Education is the passport to the future for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." No one knew, no one knew this was going to happen last March, and Honeywell, because we are an indoor air quality company, has been working feverishly trying to vet the best way that we can help people come back to work and come back to school. We're in your buildings all the time, every day, and we are running your buildings as safely as possible. We're bringing in as much outside air as your systems can handle. We are controlling them the best way they can be controlled. So we are doing what we can do for your schools as we speak. Next slide, please. You know, I just heard this all on the phone, and this is nothing I need to tell to you. You know, what are we going to do? You know, should we go back? Should we not go back? Should we, how are our kids going to get ahead? Is everything clean? The peace of mind? But know that you're not in this alone. 56.6 million families have been impacted by this. $1.2 million are what school districts are spending to get people back to school. And 41% of all public school districts have end-of-life HVAC systems. Fortunately, you're not quite in that situation anymore. You have some that are still kind of yellow, but 41 of them have end of life. So they're not even getting the quality air that your schools are getting. Next slide. So the COVID guidelines, they're very ambiguous. Some people like to hear different parts of them and not the whole sentence. For example, bring in outside air. I have districts that want to open all their windows and their doors. Well, and run their conditioning systems at the same time. That's not helpful. You know, it's not good for, it says, bring in outside air as much as can be contained during occupied times with your HVAC system. So yes, bringing in outside air is important, but not at the detriment of your whole system. Continuing operation of your system is recommended. Very important. Keeping your temperatures between 70 and 76 is what helps this not grow, if it's warmer or colder. Obviously, humidity is something terrible in Virginia. So COVID likes, rises with humidity and falls when it's lower humidity, just FYI from talking to my Canadian friends. So of course, ours is hovering probably like right around here because our humidity is so high. So we just try to keep the humidity between 40 and 60%. And they really want this Merv 13 slash 14 filters. However, school districts were not meant to have those filters in their buildings. They're too thick, won't fit into the grid that you currently have. And even if they did, the systems can't push the air through them. It would end up probably destroying your systems because they were not meant to push air through something that is that thick. So what do we do? How do we get to get better filtration? We've looked at three different core technologies. All of these technologies are being used, but I'm going to tell you some pros and cons of all three. People have heard about UV lighting. UV lighting is ultraviolet lighting that's put into your air ducts. Okay, so when your air comes from the outside, it's treated and goes into the classroom. As it circulates back through the ducts, it's treated again. But the number of times your air can get turned over in an hour isn't very much, maybe twice per hour. So if Johnny sneezes or coughs, how long does that germ take to get up into that, into that air? Into that duct where that UV lighting is? Another problem is they're very high to maintain. You have to replace the bulbs every year, and they use a tremendous amount of energy to run them. So those are some of the cons. Air purification units. Honeywell makes these, so we should be pushing them. But we are, but not really in the school environment because you would need a tremendous number of them to cover the square footage of all your classrooms. Plus, they have HEPA filters, which would have to be changed frequently. These are something that may be good for maybe a hotel room, a nurse's office, a smaller space. If you look at a classroom, you may have three or four of them in a classroom. And then you're trying to change the filters with a very limited staff. And they really have not been tested for COVID. Very few things have been tested for COVID because it's so new. The third option, which in, in our recommendation, and obviously you can take this what you think, is needlepoint bipolar ionization. What this is, is a brick or an I-bar that's put into your indoor air system, into your air handling units or your HVAC units. They produce ions. Ions are negatively or positively charged. And when they come into the room, they attach themselves to not only pathogens, odors, viruses, they attach to the positive and the negative. And I can also call someone who's really technical and go into this further if you want, and I can send you a tremendous amount of information about it. The ions attach themselves to the pathogen, the germ, basically stopping it, also making it larger so that when it does go through your ductwork, it can get trapped by your traditional filter. They have very little or no maintenance. If you notice, the one has a little bit of teeth on it. Sometimes those have to get cleaned with a little bit of alcohol, but if we're in there, we can just do that. It's no big deal. They only have a power supply, so that's the only thing that can break. So there's not a lot of moving, there's no moving parts. They have different sizes, so they can go in barred units, and they can go in your large air handling unit. So they'll be able to handle all your spaces. They, like I said, they have a 10 to 12, 14-year lifespan. They were first created, and some companies use them for energy savings purposes. They scrub the CO2 out of the air. So some energy savings companies, we did not find this to be as effective when we did your project, but other, other parts of my company do use them. So after this is all over, it can basically treat the indoor air, scrub the CO2, allowing less outdoor air to have to be conditioned. And we wouldn't do that now because right now we're trying to bring in outdoor air, but in the future. This also will work in different, who knows, we have COVID-25. Or, I mean, we don't know what's ever going to happen. It can attach to very, very tiny pathogens. So last week, we were presenting in Gloucester, and 24 teachers wrote letters about why they want this. And it wasn't just for COVID. It was for all indoor air quality needs. So this is three options that schools have. The needlepoint bipolar ionization tends to be the one that everyone's looking for. Next screen. I think I ran over this. It cleans the outside air. What's really, really important is the second to last statement. These ions produced not naturally can produce ozone. The company that we are working with has a patent on their UL2998 certified, which means they do not produce ozone, which is very critical if you're looking at companies that make this technology. It complies with the ASHRAE standards. They're only going to say it has a 90% effective rate because no one can say they have 100. This is a tool in your tool belt. We still encourage you to clean, wear masks, do all the things the CDC says. It is a way to help, and it's significant, but it is not, it is not the silver bullet. I don't want anyone to think that, that it's going to just cure everything, and we're all going to be fine. Our phone is ringing off the hook, if you can imagine. But we are only looking at helping three customers right now, and you were one of them because it has to be done if you decide to move forward by December 30th with the money that you have been allocated by the county and by the CARES Act. We've worked with you a long time, and Dr. Benson called, and I said, well, we'll present it to you. And if you decide to move forward, we're not checking anybody else. We have Gloucester that we're getting in finalizing with, we're with Middlesex. We're installing them in King Queen County as we speak. They started this summer. The cost for this county would be $650,000 to install them in all of your facilities. That includes all your open spaces like gyms. Some schools decided they weren't going to do those kind of spaces. We decided to put everything in. This also includes overtime and evening, evening installation because it's November. And we have two holidays, obviously, before, this has to be, has to be completed by the 30th. So overtime and holiday hours are included in that, in case you do move forward. If we're able to get in, if you choose not to go back to school, we may not have to use that money, obviously. But we put it in there just in case. I think I said this before, they're using it at convention centers, Baltimore Convention Center, Miami Convention Center, Cambria College, the city of Worcester did it, and they have 40 schools and 20 buildings. HUD up in Northern Virginia, they're putting it in HUD. So it is being used throughout our country to try to combat this, this virus. It's, it's fairly easy to install. That's why we believe that we could That's why we believe that we could get it done in time. We are also, also next slide please. We're offering an additional cost, but you don't have to do this, but we are producing indoor air quality reports throughout all this, everywhere in the school district and providing reports that you can share with your constituents. That tells everyone what the CO2 humidity ion particles and concentration is in all your spaces. We would collect all that data, come up with a report and you would have a report to share with all your stakeholders. This is, the reason some of our customers wanted this was because ions cannot be felt. If you're uncomfortable in a room, you get hot or stuffy, you, you don't feel an ion. So it's important just to make sure that they do run. But this is not obviously part of the installation. It's something if you, an add-on if you'd like. Do you have, next slide, any questions? It's talks about Honeywell, I don't think I need to tell you, you know, trust their expertise, we're committed to results, reinventions in our DNA. We've been making COVID masks, we've been making N-ninety-fives since the beginning. We've been selling N-ninety-fives to, or giving them to our first responder, I think. We're on television, we're coming up with these cool things to go through your airplanes and disinfect and. So Honeywell is working as hard as we can to get people back to work, back to school. So I think you all know enough about us, but questions you may have?
So I guess just to keep a little maintained some more, let's just go down the row, Kristin.
Oh.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Oliver, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins?
So best choice of the three would be the, the ionization. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is over our budget.
Okay. I have no idea what your budget even was.
Well, there's, the new COVID money is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We've already encumbered a hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Okay.
And we still have cleaning to talk about.
Sure.
Eighty thousand or so, so would be more than we could afford. Is there a way, so?
I did include every space.
I mean, there's.
Yes, obviously we put in.
There, there would no, there wouldn't be need for overtime.
Correct. I didn't know, and when I talked to Dr. Benson, he said you all were having major discussions tonight. And I'd rather err on the side of high than less and then come back and say, oh, by the way, I was wrong, it's going to cost you more. Obviously, if you decided to move forward, we would make sure the number was firm. We also could take out some spaces that are larger, like a gymnasium. We could do just classrooms. We included the school board area. We would like to keep Dr. Benson and staff safe, but if the money was only there for classrooms, we would obviously look at classrooms first. I think he would want us to do that.
And not to speak for Oliver, but you know, I did call her last week, asked for a quick turnaround.
It was very quick.
Together. So I did include, asked to include all preschool, she mentioned the school board office.
Oh, we would include the preschool because that's class, that's children.
As well, so there are certainly, and, and as she stated. Overtime, doing evening work, that kind of thing would certainly be part of that number. Like, it's all that to say, I'm sure that, that if the board decides this is something they want to explore further, then we would need to talk in more detail. When the work be done, that kind of thing, refine, which is cost estimate. I understand that cost estimate is kind of a sky high.
It was. I said, y'all put in everything you can put in. I don't know exactly what their plan is to move forward. I'd rather plan to have overtime and weekend work than not. And if they can get in, I think most of the spaces, like anything that's on the roof, they can get in without. But I think Potomac would be a big one that they can't do with the students there because obviously they have to go into the room.
So just one more point to clarify, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, it's fine.
You know, the assumption that, that only CRF funding or that, that type of funding. If we were to use part of that funding, then obviously what we've, how we've been advised is that that funding needs to be spent. And the product or the service secured with that money needs to have been received or installed by the end of the year. So if we were to move forward with this, looking to finance it through one of those revenue streams that was time sensitive, then yes, we would be in this situation. But I, I don't think, you know, we can also be creative in terms of our operating budget, that type of thing to try to help with financing in part. But I just wanted to try to open up that possibility that it's not, you know, affording it would not necessarily need to fit within only the revenue streams that I've highlighted tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. If that helps. But again, I appreciate Ms. Colbert coming up with not only the presentation, but going to her folks, having them kind of quickly give a number that undoubtedly is safe on their end, mitigates their risk, they don't want to put a number out there publicly and then find out that it was a long number. So I'm sure that they've, they're going to start a caution as far as their business. I'm confident we need to go back and find some of the variables that we would know better.
So that, was that number inflated because of the, the need?
The number was, was inflated because of having to have the work completed by December thirtieth and not knowing if your children were going back to school. So if they're going to be in the building, we'd have to do work in the night and on the weekends. So obviously we'd have to pay our, our workers more. I had no idea what your money budget was. That's just the number, I mean, Dr. Benson never told me, I don't know. I just told you what the real number was. Now, I do think it would come down because of that situation. Also, he asked me on Thursday, so it was a quick turnaround.
Dr. Benson, would there be enough money for this contract, a cleaning contract and any additional PPE that's necessary and, and the testing, rapid testing? Or would it be one or the other? Well, I, I wonder.
As far as just the, the revenue streams that are here tonight?
So would there be enough money, is there enough money available for the cleaning, the rapid testing and the ionization?
Well, we've not talked yet about the clean, so I don't know to what extent that's, that service would be secured. I think where there's a will, there's a way. I, you know, I think certainly we would probably have to go back to the operating budget to perhaps look for opportunities to reprioritize.
You also can finance equipment lease, our product.
The only thing with that idea is that I would, if in part we're going to use CRF funding, which undoubtedly I think we would, then I think how I've been advised by the state would still be in play in terms of, we would need to have that. We'd have to have it installed. I don't know, that brings up a good question about whether if it's, if it's split in terms of financing that kind of thing. But regardless, I think we would need to, I don't think we have the authority necessarily to finance over multiple years. We would need to fit it within the current year.
I, I think just, yeah, just, I, I just have a point to make. I think that we really need to know, I mean, it was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I mean, depending on what we really want and, and, you know, how we're going to be installing it, that number could be cut drastically and then we would know how it would impact our budget, correct?
So my question still is the same, do we have enough money for the six hundred and fifty thousand? Would be eighty-four thousand, six ninety-nine in contract cleaning? And I don't know how much the PPE, the rapid testing is, do we have enough money for those three things? Well, you can't.
Yes or no answer, I'd really, I'd need to go back and see because I don't think, just with the revenue streams that are identified here, the supplemental revenue streams we receive that are COVID related? No, I don't think we would if you were to include everything that you listed there. If we were open to being creative in terms of looking and reprioritizing within our operating budget to help, then possibly. Again, I don't think that the, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate is what ultimately would be required.
What would it be?
Well, I think we would, rather than holding negotiations here at a public meeting, I would ask your supporters of the board to allow me to engage with them in discussion, negotiate, but then bring back
Options.
What would be a closer number to the actual cost?
So I think, Mr. Collins, once we get down into our discussion items, we get to talking about the CRF, we might be able to figure out, you know, prioritize and see how much is left and where we can allot things, get a little bit more into detail. Did you have any other further questions? Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm going there, Ms. Colbert.
Ms. Colbert, what would be our timeframe for, for letting a contract?
We'd have to know very quickly. So I mean, if you decide that you rank your priority, let's say you say cleaning is first and rapid testing is second. Okay, you have this much money, how much can you do, you know, with this? We would work with you to come back with what we would feel like, obviously you'd want classrooms first. You know, maybe we couldn't do all the cafeteria, I don't know until we know exactly the scope of what you need done. And, but we know that we need to do this within a week to be able to do it before December thirtieth.
So.
It takes two weeks or so.
Time frame?
It's reasonable, but it's tight. I'm going to tell you, it's tight. The product takes about two-ish, two to three weeks to order it. It is in stock. And then it's just every piece of equipment has to have hands laid on it and they have to be installed. So I'm not going to tell you that you have a lot of time because you really don't, you have a few days. But again, rank what's most important and we can certainly give you options and work with Dr. Benson on, you know, does the gym need it? Does the cafeteria need it? Do the classrooms need it first? Yes. Can you do this much and you can finance the rest? You can do that. You know, it's all, it's fine with us that you pay us out of one bucket and then out of a different bucket.
So to extend that idea, then you'll think about the project maybe being planned and staggered. You know, if a, if a large portion of the project were completed prior to December thirty and paid for using one of the supplemental revenue streams, perhaps the project would be continued into next year using a different funding stream that didn't have that same time deadline. For instance, the school care is funding, you know, we've purposely tried to be strategic in, in not obligating those, those funds because we do have a longer period of time that we can utilize those funds to address needs. You could potentially have a phase one, I guess, where we address a good part of the needs and then we could have a phase two that may extend beyond December thirty, use them in the school cares, just as a sample. I didn't mean to say exclusively, we would need to look within the operating budget. But I, I want to highlight one of the point that Joyce and I spoke last week. You know, I want to make sure the public understands there's a return on this investment that's well beyond the current epidemic. That this is a technology that can help for years to come improve the air quality in terms of just general influenza and other germs that, that would help keep our students and our staff safe. Appreciate your consideration. I guess realizing that we've, you know, this information is proven brought to you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you could perhaps authorize me to engage in further conversation with Honeywell to, to further refine the number, maybe come up with a plan on my behalf as to how it could be addressed from a funding standpoint, I'd be happy to bring that back to you next week, at your next meeting, for your consideration. I know that you all like to have something playful and discussion, time would be of the essence, as I understand it. So we would just need to kind of use tonight as maybe a placeholder. Say that this, this concept or this would be a discussion item, kind of the name which it is. And then I would bring back something for your consideration and I would hope then, you know, action at that meeting. If we decide to go forward, they could get moving for us to get the equipment they need installed. Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't need to put you in a rush situation on the spot, but I think that's the reality.
I think we have a few more questions. So Ms. Gonzalez, did you have any questions? You want to turn your mic on, please?
I can do that. So I, I definitely think this sounds like a great idea. Dr. Benson, I think spending time working out estimate is a wonderful idea. And I certainly think not deliberating over the budget like today is a great use of time and that we definitely want to afford you an opportunity to come up with that estimate. But I would even just say to counter TC's claim that it's not affordable, just the numbers that you put together for us this evening. We have a balance of eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars just in these funds that you presented. On the supplemental cleaning, the maximum cost was eighty-four thousand dollars, which leaves seven hundred and sixty thousand clearly enough for that and other costs. Which, not to say that's what the final budget would look like, but to reframe that conversation, I think it's a good idea. I'm also understanding that that's the worst case scenario. So I'm definitely interested in further estimates and getting more information next week, I think it's a great idea. My one question, I guess, is partly a comment as well. The, in the beginning of your presentation, talking about that the COVID, the coronavirus transmission was greater in high humidity? I thought most studies showed that it's actually greater in low humidity.
Well, it, it's basically, yes, you need to stay between the range. That it falls to the ground, you're right, it falls to the ground if it's lower, if higher, and it raises up if it's lower humidity. I haven't mistaken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, that makes sense.
I was like, my Canadian friends were talking about their humidity and I, I mixed them up.
Oh, yeah, easy to do. Understood, thank you, that's all.
Okay, hold on, do we have any more questions on this? Okay, Mr. Collins?
So when we, when we did the energy management contract, I don't, why wasn't this in there? Because it.
Because at that point, we didn't have to feel like the energy savings would, would offset the cost in our, in our project. You had other needs that were higher and in the, you know, we did how much would it cost to install versus how much it would save? And it didn't make sense just clearly from a, from a saving energy perspective. Now that they've realized, this, a lot of this has come out just in the last few years since we've done that project, that it can do all of these other things. It's not just for energy savings and for odors. Odors and energy savings were the first two things that it did, but it didn't fit in your project. Now they're realizing, because they've done more testing, that E. coli and MRSA and TB and that it does all these things they didn't realize.
And. So you want to isolate classrooms, how can you do that when you, when you have a unit? Because it would go into the, where the outside air enters the building, so that you couldn't really isolate.
Sometimes you have air handling units that are over a gym. A lot of times, maybe that may not be a space you do. When we did, with Gloucester, we went through and we went through all their spaces and we came up with, with the facility director and staff, priority wish. You know, based on your units. We'd have to look to see what you have, but we did price absolutely every space.
So you still had to look and see what units we have?
No, 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 we looked at your units and we used them all. We'd have to say, you have an air handling unit that serves the gym. A lot of times you have large equipment on top of your gymnasiums, that's just typical. Well, there's probably, I don't know what you're going to be using your gymnasiums for. A lot of times, but people aren't gathering like that in gyms. You may be. So we, we'd have to just look to see if your high priority spaces versus your lower priority spaces.
About hallways?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, that would be a high priority, I mean, whatever your priority is, is what our priority be. You would set your priority, we would not. Lunchroom, I know a lot of times the students are not eating lunch in the, they're not eating lunch in the, in the lunchroom, they're eating it in their classrooms and some of my other customer sites. So maybe we wouldn't do the lunchroom yet. We'd work with your staff because I don't know how you're using your school with COVID situation.
Can I clarify just because I'll be talking, I believe, with Joyce, but when you're saying prioritizing, are we talking about what to address first? Are we talking about what to address period? Because I would assume we would want the buildings covered as a whole, whether or not we do that all upfront or not.
Right.
That capacity has yet to be determined, but I hear the word prioritize.
That was only based on first, I would, I mean, whatever you guys want, but.
I just want to make sure I was hearing, we're looking for the whole building, is what we would want. Impact, yeah.
Right. And so you're really prioritizing the construction timeline?
Right. But we can get it all, we could get it all done if you made a decision within, I mean, I mean, no later than next week. We have got, it takes two to three weeks to order and, and time is of the essence. And that's not ours, that's the December thirtieth deadline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's very good to see you. Okay, so do we want to move on to item B, supplemental cleaning options?
Thank you, ma'am, chair members of the board. Another topic discussed at the last meeting, an information. Thank you, ma'am, chair members of the board, another topic discussed at the last meeting, uh, and information requested was pertain to cleaning services or supplementing the cleaning effort in our, our buildings. So, during the week, I appreciate Mr. Wishard was kind enough to help me with this. Um, and I asked him to do two things. One, to find out what our current capacity was in terms of our substitute custodians or extra persons that we could call in a moment's notice to come and help our existing custodians to, uh, to do additional cleaning in our buildings. And so at the top of the, um, I don't know if you. Look through, I think there's a slide four that's going a little more further, further. One more, here we go. Okay, so the top bullet, main bullet, talks about utilizing our available King George County Schools, substitute custodians, supplement our existing staff. I simply looked at two, I did speak with the principals and they recommended that if we were to do that, we bring in supplemental help in the evening time and if they needed to, they could reassign an evening custodian to the daytime since they knew the facility probably a little better than ourselves. But they would recommend bringing in extra help in the evening time. I simply priced it for your adjudication at, at, we had two at each elementary school, three days per week, for an eight-hour shift in the evening, uh, and just multiply the cost out, estimated cost for you there. And again, that's for the nine weeks, for the marketing period. Keep in mind, that is simply the elementary, two at each of the three elementary schools. Contract and services, I appreciate, um, forgive me, sir, but the, I appreciate your company agreeing to take a look and I believe you all came out and looked at our facilities, Mr. Wishard. They were kind enough to offer us an estimate that we wanted to use for your consideration. And in their case, um, similarly, six quarters, uh, two for each elementary school. Uh, they provided it at two days per week and then a three days per week for the nine weeks total. So, you have the information in terms of, uh, you know, approximate costs for that supplemental help. I hope that's the information you were looking for and, uh, have any other questions you may have.
All right, so let's start at the other end, Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh, no, good information, I don't have any questions.
Okay, I don't think your mic was on, I have no idea what you just said.
It is on, I said, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hawk?
Um, this is for just the, the next nine weeks, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's for the, for nine weeks period of time. Uh, I can't speak for the company that, you know, if time then would require them to go back to visit, we'd have to check with that company.
So.
For us at least, I think that would be the same amount, you know, regardless of the nine week period.
Okay.
So, if you wanna look at it for the rest of the year, you could simply multiply that amount by three, four, nine week period. This is why I set up that stuff.
Or do you, um, is it your understanding that, that, uh, contract price would, would remain similar? Uh, should we push it out?
I don't know, and I don't, I don't wanna put any one company on the spot. I think the company that's here tonight was gracious enough to, um, agree to give us a cost estimate and greatly appreciate that.
I, I don't wanna put him on the spot either, but, uh, if they'd like to speak to that.
Yes, please.
That was the estimate I gave, was for the, was for supplemental porter help for your, you know, for your existing staff. And it, those, those numbers look about right from the office and that's what we gave you. If I could be so bold as to make a recommendation, uh, just, I've been, I've been doing this my whole life. I went to Las Vegas and played basketball in college, I was out there for five years and come on back. So, I've been doing this my whole life. So, what I can tell you is this, if you guys are on a budget and you, you're looking to budget some money, because we just did this for the city of Fredericksburg over there, elementary school with Hugh Mercer. So, I don't know when you're going back, so that, that kinda is a question that I had. But what I saw when I went into Sealston would, I would, I, and this is just me, so I don't wanna tell you how to mow the lawn. I would take whatever funds you wanna relegate or you could give me a budget, or I could even give you a cost estimate, another one, and it wouldn't be hard for me to do, I could have it to you in a day. I would go into Sealston and I would just deep clean that sucker in a big way. When I was in there, I noticed that the tile and the grout in the restrooms was appalling. I noticed that the tile and the grout in the hallways leading out of the restrooms was, you know, you, almost a cattle path of funk, okay? So, there's more dirt and grime in your lobby over at that one where you go to Colonial Beach, the elementary school, than there is in the parking lot. You need to have those buildings deep cleaned and in a big way, that's what Andres and I do. So, we'll come in and what we would do is, and you could give us Sealston or one and I'll, I'll do it for cost or whatever, just to show you what we can do. But I come in there and I deep clean the heck out of them and I get those floors right and get the grout right and get the tile and grout right, get all the baseboards clean and just give it a good, deep, hot cleaning, what we call a bio wash. And so while we're cleaning it, we'll do kick plates on these doors, the door handles. We'll do a deep disinfecting, we have the latest and the greatest on all the electrostatic cleaning equipment out there. I paid a pretty penny for it, but I fought my way to get it when this pandemic first started. I mean, I was going from Memphis to Mississippi to get equipment, I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. But, um, you know, you can bring in that supplemental help to help your porters and that's, that's a kind idea. But let's be honest, they're chipping away, the biggest things they're chipping away at every day are the floor surfaces, your floors, carpets, floors, that's what the largest amount of work in your buildings is, okay? If they could take some of that stress off them, because all of that was suddenly cleaned and could be maintained instead of, they're chipping away at it. I mean, when you go over that one over there, there, there's dirt under the wax, I mean, you can see the dirt under the wax. You know, if I was a parent and I knew what I was looking at, I wouldn't be happy when I walked in there. So, if they could take their time and they could focus on touch points, high-traffic areas, doorknobs, door handles, and be seen doing more work in that nature, as opposed to having to worry about deep cleaning the tile and the grout in the bathroom or the floors, the whatever weekly buffing or maintenance they're doing on those floors. I would just think, you know, by the end of the year, and like I said, my, my, my twin brother's kids went to Sealston. You know, we, we, we wanna see you guys do well, we don't wanna see any kids get sick over there, you know, whoops. It's, it's no skin off my back, I just built the baddest steam cleaning truck you've ever seen, I built it. I mean, we, I've built all of mine because when we go to Geico in Maryland or they send us to Virginia Beach or Lakeland, Florida, to go in there and deep clean a building or turn it, what we call turn it, we want the best gear. And I think, you know, we try to give our employees the best gear because it's, you guys are fighting what we're fighting and that's to get people to do the job. You know, it's not the, it's not a product, you're using great products, uh, Cliff, I believe his name over there, he's a real go-getter, he's a great guy and he's using good methods, uh, we talked about standards, you know, I checked him out. I just bounce some things off him and he bounced them off me and we checked out together. So, I know he knows what he's doing, you guys got good leadership over there. But I think what you're facing is what a lot of people face, is that over time, battling the labor and battling the people, the buildings get to a deteriorated state, the bathrooms get so bad that they can't clean them with a buffer. But they, and you know, the reason why a lot of these companies, well, most of them don't have the gear we have is because it's really expensive and it's really expensive to maintain. But, you know, I'll be honest with you, Andres, you know, I have about two hundred employees now. When I started, it was me and my brother and Andres and another guy. When you're doing that work yourself, you want the best, right? Well, when I'm giving it to my guys, for my clients and my guys' sake, I want the best because they're busting their tails out there to get it done, because it is hard work. I mean, uh, then, let's not take anything away from your porters. I don't wanna throw you under the, throw anybody under the bus, I'm not trying to take credit away from anyone, but they're facing a terribly hard job. And then when people leave and they don't come in, this is in the cleaning business. Every night, those porters are faced with decisions, right? So, we've got eight people to clean this building, well, three of them didn't come in. Something's gotta give, right? We've gotta make a choice, what's gonna go? We've gotta clean those bathrooms, we know that, we've gotta get to touch points, but something's gotta give. So, every night they're faced with these really big decisions on what, what, what is gonna get left out, honestly, you know? So, when we can come in and we can help them with the big stuff like carpets, the floors, special services, things of that nature, it helps with your, it helps with your daily maintenance. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do whatever you ask us to do. But, um, just out of demonstration purposes and just show you, kinda help you understand where you're at, um, I would, I would, I would take Sealston Elementary as a, as a, as a, just an example, give me about four days and we'll turn it and you'll, it'll blow your mind. I know it will, because I, I've seen it, I know what it is.
So, how about after four days?
Huh?
How about after four days, um, as far as disinfecting for COVID? So, what happens then?
So, this is where we can work with your staff and what we've done with our staff. And we've done, we've made some just minor tweaks on the disinfectants that we use and then where we use them. So, for instance, instead of using neutral cleaner and the auto scrubber when we mop the floor, now we use disinfectant, okay? The disinfectants that come out of the, the meter dispenser station, so we don't do the gallon and pour and the glove and hope that we get it right, we don't do that, it comes off a meter dispenser station. Concentrate, goes into the station, you push a button, it automatically mixes it and dispenses it. We've used, we use a product with NCL, the same company you're currently using called Dual Blend Number Eight. That disinfectant is labeled to kill and, and, you know, it's registered on the list for SARS, coronavirus, all the good stuff. I would encourage a cooperative program where we could, you know, we could talk with your guys, but eventually, you know, and I'm, I don't wanna throw too much at you at once, but, you know, we did Spotsy and County for five years and we did them seamlessly. The only reason we lost that contract was because a company from up in Maryland came in and underbid it by a half a million dollars. Well, they turned around and sued Spotsy for a half a million dollars and packed up and left after ninety days. Now they're doing it themselves. We know what we're doing, we've been doing this for forty-five years. I would say, give it to me, I have a state-share contract with the University of Mary Washington, you can hop on it, you don't have to bid it out, everything's right there. You let me procure your people into my staff, integrate them with our management and our training methods and our equipment, and you raise your level up. And, um, our reputation speaks for itself, we don't work on turning big clients, we work on keeping them. I mean, I've had Geico for twenty-five years, twenty-five, we're doing something right with those folks. I mean, and we've seen management changes, our bosses changed three times, but, you know, we're just kinda where the rubber meets the road. We work hard, you know, we pay our people well, we care about our people, that's the key. You gotta take care of the people doing the work, it's an awful job, I mean, it really is, but, uh.
No, I think, yes.
Go ahead.
So, what you're saying is that, that we could essentially integrate our, us, our folks with your folks on a continuing contract?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we've done, and we've done that before, is that, you know, we would just, you know, in the term attrition, we would just take them on and keep the good ones, weed out the bad ones and then take over the HR part of it and the people part of it and let it eat. But, you know, in your current situation, we're here for you. You know, we, we got, we, we've got substitute cleaners and like I said, at the drop of the hat, you know, we're at your service. We've got the people, we've got the staff and the equipment, I've got a hundred and ninety-five people. We can carve out a staff for you to come in and do whatever you want.
Now, how, how, um, if, if we did a deep cleaning next week?
Yep.
How far out would that get us?
Oh, I think that deep cleaning would get you to, that'd get you through spring if it was maintained proper. You should be able to do, and like we did with Spotsy and we're getting ready to do with Stafford, you deep clean it over the summer, you revisit it over Christmas break, sorry, Thanksgiving, you touch it, Christmas break, you give it a good deep cleaning, same thing at Easter, and then you make it to spring. And when I say touch it, I mean floors and carpets, floors and carpets, even the big areas clean and polished. Your floors are gonna get buffed every week as part of just your maintenance, but I mean, top scrub and refinish, stripware necessary, and tile and grout in your bathrooms. The bathrooms are what tear up your floors, because the mung and the mess gets in the grout and then the little guys trample it out into the wax. And if you don't know what you're doing with the wax, the wax is soft and it takes it in, you got yellow, it's a long story.
I'm most interested in the disinfecting.
Sure.
Um, to, um, minimize any, um, COVID.
Sure.
So, that's, the deep cleaning is good, and I understand how that goes to the next stage, but, um, the disinfecting is what I'm the most interested in.
To be honest with you, you know, it's about money and, you know, I don't see the, it's, it's not, I don't see the need for the expenditure with me. If you want, just, you don't need to spend that money. You need to work with your current staff, give them the proper disinfectants and the proper tools. I saw a lot of them walk around Sealston with a rag and disinfectant in their hand, that's great. Until you get about through the third door handle, then that rag's contaminated. They need to have a bio wash, they need to have a clean bucket and a dirty bucket. When they go, they got six or seven clean rags, they got a dirty bucket. So, when they're done with that sore rag, it goes to the dirty bucket and got people to keep working. It's just about methods and techniques of knowing what you're doing.
So, is, is this price, um, the contract service quote, is that for, um, sanitizing or is that for actually cleaning or sanitizing and cleaning?
Yeah.
But not deep cleaning?
No, that's not your floors and stuff like that, yeah, that's just your, and that's just two quarters a day, eight hours a day and, you know, I, I just, again, I didn't see the building where the two porters are gonna be doing what the regular porters should be doing. If you have, you have the adequate staff that, well, you know, you know, we're disinfecting, disinfecting, yeah, I'll wipe, I'll wipe and wipe and wipe.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, that's, disinfectant is the big D, the chemical, use the proper disinfectant and just keep throwing it at it, from the floors to the walls, everything, I mean, there, there.
That's during school, school hours, correct? That's during the school time hours, you would be in there doing that behind children?
And that's the thing, that, that Dual Blend Number Eight that you use from NCL, it's a human safe disinfectant. You use it and then touch that door and you're fine, you know, it's, it's good to go.
Great.
Yeah, you guys are ahead of the curve, you got good people, you're using the right stuff, so, you know, you're not far off.
That's great, thank you very much, good to hear, thank you.
We're gonna get back to scrubbing floors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can, can I ask a, a clarifying question? So, the, the deep cleaning is in addition to a contract price?
Yes, that's the way I understood, it's something different, he hasn't given us the price for that. So, that would be an additional price above and beyond what we have right here.
Okay.
So, this is just for them to come in every day, um.
This is just regular cleaning?
Two days a week, two or three days per week, right, to just clean.
But the disinfecting is not part of this?
This is the disinfecting.
This is the disinfecting?
Yeah, not the deep cleaning.
Okay, okay.
But just for discussion purposes, I, I'm not interested in the, the first one, I'm more interested in the contract services. For discussion.
I just wanna remind the board that it was nice of the company to voluntarily come here, uh, but it was different and as it was the kid at Honeywell, where I invited her to come. Uh, this company was very nice to come visit and give us kind of a, an idea of where cost generically might fall. It's just one company though, undoubtedly, we'd have to work with our county procurement office to make sure that if we were to move forward with something, we would do it, they would help or they would support that effort, whether it meant we had to bid or we could, as the gentleman mentioned, provide a contract. But I just wanna clarify that to make sure there's no confusion, this is not necessarily the D company, um, that we've identified, kind of thing. Company that we reached out to and give us this preliminary quick information for our board. He voluntarily showed up tonight.
And it's a local company?
Yeah.
I believe so.
They are, yes, yeah, they are local, they, like you said, he does a lot of work for Spotsy, Stafford, Mary Wash, UMW, so.
I'm sure there are other local companies that fall, I, I want to point out.
So, if we, if we did have to go through the procurement process though, I mean, isn't that a, it's a lengthy process? I mean, you have to put the bid out there for thirty days, there's some restrictions, so we're not looking at anything where we could get something done within
unless.
Four to six weeks.
Well, unless there were an existing, um, contract already negotiated, we could buy it on, on a common price.
And I do believe he mentioned that, that with Mary Wash, she had, they had, or University of Mary Washington, they have that, so, good, okay. Ms. Tolliver, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I have a question, I actually have a comment, um, but he also implied that we have adequate staff and we have adequate, um, supplies and chemicals. So, it sounds to me like it's a matter of maybe training our staff that we have. So, what he's talking about here is just adding two porters or custodians, three days a week, at a cost almost three times of what would it cost us for, I, use our substitute staff. One comment, and two, um, the deep cleaning is a whole separate issue, I think, I have to mention. Like, the disinfecting is one thing, but would, he also talked about attrition, like hiring our staff or hiring, using his staff and taking on our staff and getting rid of the ones that they didn't think were adequate. So, there's a whole bunch of different things going on, I think.
I think that concept, and with all due respect, I think that concept is a bigger budget issue that maybe we wanna tackle, but.
Right, right.
I also wanna mention, last Wednesday, we had the vendor, one of our vendors of the products we do use, the gentleman, he gives right stuff, actually give another round of training, by training for our Hallmark custodial staff last Wednesday.
Right, so, um, that, one of the, one of the big things in the email and, and people making board comment was the sanitation, the disinfectant, they call. was the sanitation, the disinfectant they call it, and um, the cleanliness. So a company like that could get you ahead of the curve. Some of the things that he described in like hearing of one particular school. So you could kill two birds with one stone on this, on the, on the disinfecting and cleaning. You could get it to where the, the employees, current employees, you can stay ahead of the game and, and still, and just have it disinfected, so it'd be um, safer to the hospital than to do a hospital with staff.
I'm, I'm not baiting, I'm not baiting the uh,
It's a comment.
I think,
It's a comment, thank you. So uh, I just, I did have a question. I'm, I'm just curious, um, it's unfortunate that he left, if, if the price includes any kind of cleaning supplies? I mean, he mentioned that they use the same cleaning supplies. So I don't know if that would include their own cleaning supplies they would use in addition to ours? So that, that's something I think we need clarified.
It'd be very much the same, but you would want to,
Right. And I think that I, I'm going to make the assumption that they probably do provide their own cleaning services or their cleaning supplies. Cause I know another, I, I know some other companies that use them and they use their own cleaning supplies. And that may um, kind of justify why the price is so drastically different. So, yeah, no, I agree with you, Ms. Ms. Tolliver. Okay, um, can we move on to the availability of teachers for K two plan?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Can I just, you said the price is so different. You talking about the contract services where there's, there's two different plans there? So what are you, what are you talking about the price is so different? Where is that?
Well, I'm just a 366 per week for nine weeks. So the nine week total is 32, uh, say 33,000. And then the nine week total down below is the 56,466 for two days per week. And then the other one is for three days per week. So, and,
What I see is these are two different, completely different plans.
Well, so we,
The price would be, I would think that would be different.
And I did not lay these out for comparison between the two, or two completely different approaches. I just assumed that the one, if, if we needed to go through a procurement process, that would probably take at minimum two weeks perhaps. Um, maybe longer. If we needed something sooner than the top um, approach, you know, it could be an approach we could use um, to, to address things sooner if the board felt we should do that. So I, I didn't lay them out necessarily to compare one against the other.
Right.
There are two distinct approaches. One would be obviously a little bit more expedient, I think, than the other. But that could be a short term until we secure contract. That is the only reason I put both of them there.
Okay, so can we move on to the availability of teachers for K two plan?
Just Madam Chair, um, just wanted to give you the update you all request. You had requested I come back with a, uh, last week we talked about the staffing for the K two plan. And we had inserted to try to lower the numbers, a, uh, to be determined, so to speak, spot for an extra teacher at each of the elementary schools. So we have identified three candidates, uh, should the board choose, uh, move forward. And I just thought I'd give you that update without naming these folks, because we don't know to what extent, uh, we would need their services. I just thought I'd update you that way. There's three candidates, those are the credentials, generally, of three candidates um, that would be available to, to uh, fill responsibilities associated with those spots.
Yes, so just to clarify, um, am I understanding correctly that all of these teachers are currently working um, as a teacher in some capacity, uh, and we're just kind of restructuring them?
Not as a teacher, no, but they are all three approved, uh, two of the three are, I believe, approved staff members. And one uh, is a, is an approved on our sub, but we've used that person at one, uh, before, at one of them, so. Yeah.
Okay, so she's currently a long, or he or she is currently a long-term sub, then we're gonna continue just taking and putting some notes. Do we have any questions, Ms. Tolliver?
I just have a comment. Um, on candidate three, and I think we all got this email, the existing paraprofessional, if moved into a teaching, long-term subposition, would be taking away from services offered for the specialized teacher that she's currently paraprofessionally for.
So she's currently in another position.
Paraprofessional is currently working in specialized classroom. So if moved, can I just backfill with this up? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So that position would not be left open, is what she says? They have backfill of their position.
So when you, when you speak at this meeting, you can't hear it home if you're not in front of a mic?
Right.
Just repeat what she just said, please?
I, I believe the question was the, in the case of candidate number three, that person would be reassigned uh, to help with one of these three teaching positions and would vacate the paraprofessional position uh, that she currently occupies. But our commitment would be to backfill her position with uh, with a substitute to help in terms of her job possibly.
Thank you. All right, is, um, do we have any more questions about the teachers? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple. Um, so, so to, to tack on to Ms. Tolliver's comment about the paraprofessional, so, so I understand, yes, that like, so she's gonna be reassigned, but that creates a vacancy. So is another long-term sub available to backfill that that's already been identified? Okay. Um, and then the first candidate who it says is an existing certified teacher or has voluntarily reassigned? So that's someone who's already working? And so in the plan that was presented last week that had the three, what, orange color or whatever, the three, the three vacancies, was one of them already, was that individual already like assigned for one of those? Or was she teaching a different class? Like, how does that work?
Mr. Senske, could you please come to the mic? Thank you.
Yeah, as she comes up. No, she was not teaching in, in that spot, if I understand you correctly. She has another title or another set of responsibilities with our district currently. But she is a certified teacher operating in that role. We simply would move her to this role, if they're really bring those.
And then what happens to the role that she was previously filling?
That role, right now, we could go without filling. Um, it's a, she's a math coach at one of our schools. She's actually the teacher who spoke earlier tonight, um, and said she volunteered to,
Oh, I see.
And she is a former kindergarten teacher.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, I see. All right, thank you.
Are there any more questions? I'd like to make a motion to take a quick five-minute break. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna take a, Rhode County School Board is now back in session. And we will move on to discussion item D, employee testing for COVID-19. Dr. Benson? Good?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, last meeting, it was requested that I bring back information pertaining to uh, the availability of COVID or paid for, school division paid for COVID-19 testing for uh, employees. Um, in discussions I had with Mr. Collins, uh, he encouraged me to look at the county, our own county and the service, they've set up for employees to try to capture the spirit of the idea. Um, I did speak with Dr. Young, county administrator, he forwarded forward to me the letter he wrote to employees explaining uh, the benefit they have provided. Uh, and I took straight from part of that letter, the description. Um, I don't mean to read to you, but for the folks at home, I'll go ahead and, and read this uh, this short paragraph. But the county is, uh, this is again, the county government, uh, is paying for non-diagnostic COVID-19 testing up to $150 if the employee's health insurance will not cover rapid testing. Rapid testing is highly recommended to help the employee and those potentially exposed to receive results quicker. This funding will not be used for any, for antibody tests. And again, that's taken straight verbatim from Dr. Young's letter to employees. So in essence, the county has established accounts with three Frederickburg facilities that are equipped to conduct rapid tests. The, I, I did do some research in our own insurance, our county schools, employee insurance, if an employee needs a, you have rapid testing completed. Uh, our insurance does waive any office visit co-pay, uh, and does cover the cost of the COVID testing. Uh, and that includes rapid testing, not just the antibody test. Um, you had asked about potential cost for this, or what would be a, a good estimate? Uh, that would obviously be related to how many employees would potentially utilize it, so it's difficult uh, to make a guess there as far as utilization. But I thought the piece about our insurance uh, may help bracket that in a little bit for you. But that's um, that's in essence, I hope that captures kind of the idea. Um, if it doesn't, let me know and I'm happy to go back. The only, I did ask other school divisions, but I don't know another school division that's offering, or doing like onsite testing or has a similar partnership right now. But I'm happy to continue to look into it if I'm not, to address the question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hi, yes, um, so let's see, so I had a, so you said that our, the school, our, school insurance offered to employees would, would in fact cover the cost of the rapid tests? Okay, um, so then I was curious about the county piece being that they had accounts with the three Frederickburg facilities. Um, I emailed Ms. Cupka earlier today and she got back to me, well, Dr. Young emailed back with both, saying, cause I was wondering about the fact that they were in Frederickburg versus our local clinics. And the, this said that they established that before our clinics had the capability to do the rapid testing. Um, but I know I called a couple of weeks ago just out of curiosity. Um, and they, ours do have rapid testing. So I'm, and Dr. Young made it sound like we could establish some with whoever, right? So we could, instead of having people drive to Frederickburg and similar local option could be arranged?
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I, again, I took that straight from his uh, his letter, that the three facilities that the county's established, that doesn't mean, you know, we would need to do that.
It does.
Information there.
So what would be a reasonable amount to budget this slide item? Given the fact that the insurance, the county is in, I don't know how many people have the county insurance?
I don't know. I guess we could, um, I could, I could call Dr. Young back and see if they have data related to how frequently has this benefit been used? In their case, take the number of employees the county has and then simply multiply the usage by our number. You know, do the ratio kind of comparison. And that could give us maybe an estimated amount we could set aside for this purpose.
Good, so there. Go ahead. Is there insurance covered? Are they in the same boat?
I don't know that. I, I have to answer that question. Uh, keep in mind, I don't wanna imply that all of our employees um, utilize the school division insurance. That's how,
That's where the cost would come in.
Right.
Correct.
Potentially, if their insurance didn't cover. I think that's one, they did uh, yeah, in that, in that first line, if, if the employee's health insurance, regardless of if it's county insurance or not, I assume, did not cover the rapid testing. Then the employee, I assume at the county level, they could submit a um, uh, a receipt. I do know they have a pre, uh, I did not include this, but they have a, a, like a pre-authorization process, where the employee needs to see pre-authorization for the non-diagnostic testing they wanted. It's an internal step.
I do believe we've given that information as far as how many teachers do have our insurance and how many do not. I, I think we've asked that in the past for some reason, so that's probably 50%, yeah, so.
But I'd be happy to do that. That's just a simple mathematical ratio, if we wanna use the county numbers, that might give you a starting place to set aside money for that and offset that benefit.
Great. Um, Ms. Hock, would you have questions?
My question is how often testing would need to occur?
I would think it would be based on, I'm sorry, oh, your mic was not on, Ms. Hock. Do you want to turn your mic on and ask that question again, please?
The question is how often testing would need to occur?
So I believe testing would be need to occur if they showed signs of symptoms? Or if they were exposed? No, well, yeah, I mean, even if they're exposed, sometimes you still have to wait 14 days because you don't necessarily, if you're exposed, you're not necessarily gonna have to contract the virus immediately. So, um, that's my understanding.
So that would be a decision that you all could, you would make. I don't know what the county, if they have a limit of time, but I didn't remember reading any.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Ms. Collins, do you have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, I think at this point, may I, um,
It's twice tonight I've been called Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, I've, in the eyes in the back of my head.
That's okay.
Um, I'd like to, to make a statement at this point, if I may. And I'd like to address the decision that, that all of us have struggled with um, so intensely. And, and I know every one of our staff and folks, um, top down, bottom up, have, have been consumed with this. I certainly have. And I, I want to begin this statement by apologizing to all involved for the time it took and for all the efforts that have already been expended. But in the meantime, um, I, I have tried to do additional homework and, and I've done calls to friends. But in the meantime, I, I have tried to do additional homework and, and I've done calls to friends and former colleagues, both in other school systems and in other states, and have authenticated the numbers that were sent to us earlier in another county that had concerned me greatly. I spoke to a very neutral nurse practitioner and several medical contacts in a neighboring school district. And their numbers appeared to be accurate to that point in time of, of both exposure and symptom occurrence. And at this point, the school system that, that I spoke with was Spotsylvania, and they did indeed have at least one positive case in most of their schools and sometimes several quarantines in each school occurring. The state spread is continuing and the national positivity rate is predicted to increase in the next several months. I've spoken to board members in states north of us, which had appeared to be doing so well in the, and doing everything in the best possible manner with some success, but their rise continues, primarily they believe because of lack of mitigation efforts in, in the community. In other words, I guess at this point, the risk does appear to outweigh the benefits, especially since we continue to be without additional staff and our numbers appear to be too large to socially distance. So I'm putting a motion on the floor at this point in time, although I understand that we're in a work session and that it's, it's unusual to do so. I apologize for that, Madam Chair. I'm putting a motion on the floor to revise our date of return to the second semester for all students. And I, I guess I'm sorry to have been that board member, but so be it.
Second, the motion. Motion's been seconded, we can open it up for discussion. Ms. Oliver? Mr. Collins? Here, turn your mic on, please.
So we voted on this twice and we discussed this three times.
That's right.
So what, in essence, I think it's very neglectful of this board to the point of negligence to make decisions for 4,000 students and their parents for a small special interest group and not listening to the folks that were here to serve. We were put here to serve from each of our districts in one at large. We were sent out survey after survey and the results are the same, but we're going to ignore those surveys. And not only are you going to ignore the surveys, but you gave options for in-person and virtual. So the, all these parents that have changed their entire schedules, changed their entire lives, you're saying that they don't matter, or that's how I feel. And you're saying that these children that are in definitely need of services, all the kids that are failing, and that's just the ones that I quoted last time, were the middle school and the high school, and all the children that haven't even showed up to school, that we don't, we, we talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. There's children that are going to succeed no matter what, virtually or in person. And then there's the folks that we really need to get when we talk about equity, we talk about, we talk about and we talk about it, but we're not walking it. You're not going to stop the coronavirus. Only thing you can do is mitigate it. So we have spent, or we are in the process of spending an enormous amount of money. What happens to the money that we spent that the board of supervisors gave us for, to open schools? Are we going to have to pay that back? I would suggest probably so. Do you have that money available? Probably not. Why did we spend all that money on things we're not even going to do? So I, I am, I am at wit's end with this board and being negligent in duties. And I apologize to the public that we've even gone down these roads. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver, did you have something to say?
Well, I would just comment that that money is being spent to send kids back to school, it's just a matter of when we send them back. So it is being spent for all those things we're spending it for, if we go back in January, it's, it's going to be the same thing. We're not going to have to give it back because we're using it for the purposes it was designed for.
So I, I think that some of that money is actually to be spent while the kids are in school, especially the cleaning. I mean, obviously, we're not going to need extra cleaning if the kids aren't in school. So, and there's other, you know, instances of, of the money being spent that we're not going to need. And I know that I have personally heard from some of the board of supervisors that they're not going to be very willing to work with us and, and requesting some of that money back, what that means, I don't know. But I, you know, I, I, I have an issue because I thought that we really did a good job. I went around to the schools on Friday and looked at some of the classrooms, they weren't 100% set up, but they were definitely underway and looked really good. And, you know, the thing is, is that, you know, we have to look at the indicators and one of the big indicators that we didn't meet was a six-foot distance. But, you know, we have risk mitigation and, you know, we've, we've implemented certain strategies in order to mitigate that, that risk of not being able to meet that six feet. And I think for a majority of the, of the desks, they were at least three feet apart with a little bit of wiggle room for each student sitting at the desk. And then once you get the dividers up, I think that, that is definitely helpful. You know, I, I think that it's, it's unfortunate because, you know, this is, this is working, this is working in other states. I was just recently in Florida and I talked to several people down there and, you know, when they opened up in the schools, their numbers didn't surge like so many people claim to think that if we open, we're going to have this huge influx of, of cases here. And, you know, we are not in the, the flu season. The height of the flu season is actually from week 48 through week 12, plus or minus a week or two there. So opening our schools in January, you know, I, I think that we have a higher risk of trying to do so. If we're saying we can't do it now, to turn around and say that we're going to do it then. And, you know, I think that the tragedy here is that we didn't open up in August because, you know, the fact of the matter is, is we really need to get in to the schools so that we can determine, you know, there, there's, I, I still believe that there's always going to be things out there that we're going to have to go through and learn to try to determine what, what we, you know, how we can do better. And, you know, had we gone in in August, we would give us the nine weeks to be able to adjust to that, just as we have adjusted to virtual learning. And I don't think that it's, it's prudent for us, nor do I think it is responsible for us to say that we're going to be able to do this at the height of, of the flu season. So, you know, not only am I very disappointed, but I, I also feel that the teachers that who have worked so hard in, in getting all of this together and are anxious to do it, because on September 28th in our family survey, it was, the families returning was on average 35 to 65. 65% of the families wanted to return. And even the teachers, when we had that survey and the noes were 142 and the somewhats and yeses were 289, that's almost two times the amount. So even if it said somewhat comfortable, that tells me that they're, you know, not, they're, they're still willing to come back. So we have teachers and staff, twice as many saying that they're willing to come back. And we have twice as many of the families that are saying that they want to come back. And I, I have a really hard time with us continually to change the plan. You know, we, people have to plan and for us to sit here and say, okay, we're not going to do it now, which I think is terrible and it's really pulling the rug out from people, but then to turn around and say, okay, now we're going to try for January, that is not only kicking the road, or the can down the road, but it, it is being extremely irresponsible and saying that we're going to be able to open and the numbers are going to be better when we're at the height of the, of flu season. So. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a comment. Um, so, so I hear you, Mr. Collins, that we've voted on this twice and discussed it three times. I completely agree that the timing is terrible and to rescind the case, this case, sending our kindergarten to second grade students back. To rescind that plan three days prior to our scheduled reopening is on its face seemingly irresponsible. However, I believe the fact that we voted on it and discussed this matter so repeatedly is indicative of a lack of confidence in the plan before us. As I've stated before, our original vote for the K2 plan was not a vote for a plan, it was a plan, it was a vote for an option. And the plan really only came together and came into underdevelopment after it was voted on. Um, as you all know, I did not originally vote for the K2 option and I've twice voted to rescind it. The tragedy is not that we did not open in August, as previously stated, it's that we did not have a plan in August. And now we are on the path to developing a solid plan. I feel it's prudent to remember that the schools, that we're here to provide an education for our students. And as both teachers and parents have pointed out to us repeatedly for weeks and especially continued this last week, even with the pending reopening date 10 days ahead of us, we're disrupting that education by sending kids back to school with a part of a plan that is a piecemeal approach. We need a phased plan that has the end in mind and the end is getting everyone back in, everyone back in school. And the K2 plan does not do that because that was not how it was intended. It was, it began as an option. And like I said, a piecemeal approach, it doesn't consider the end game. So, you know, it was commented on this evening, like we're going to disrupt kids, kids are going to get new teachers on Thursday and then the holidays are going to come and then in the semet, you know, in next semester, when the, excuse me, the new advisory group has a, you know, a new phased plan, we don't know what that means for K through two, and we didn't consider that originally. And so I think what the irresponsible thing was to have voted on a plan prematurely and I therefore continue to be in support of rescinding that plan and developing a full approach that begins in January.
So what, what, what is this, I ask?
34-page item that was developed in July and only slightly modified. And then also the phasing is taking in K through two first, that's our phasing plan.
So we're going to just, my other comment is we're just going to throw this out the window, all this, I was done to bring students back. And we're just going to throw it out the window. I.
I don't think we're throwing anything out the window, Ms. Collins. I think the committee.
Why'd you even, why didn't you bother to do this?
I think the committee that is in place, that has been, I guess, reconvened, the, the new committee will build on this plan to, using all the things we're hearing tonight, all the pieces that are coming together. And yes, they are coming together, but they're not together at this point. And yet the, the school rooms look wonderful, the teachers have done a fantastic job. And our kicking the can has not helped them and I'll be the first to admit that. I certainly think I was part of kicking that can, but honestly, the can only stops when it's safe to return. And part of that will depend, we don't know. And, and I guess I really need to amend my motion to say that our return date needs to be to the beginning of second semester or a date for safe return as to, as to be determined by the board.
So I'm not sure that we're going to ever get to a point where it's safe return. If we're not able to accept risk mitigation and say, okay, we're not going to be able to meet certain things at 110% and we're going to take it a step above that and use risk mitigation, if we're not as a board willing to do that, we're never going to get to that point. So we really need to just stop, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, we just need to stop, you know, dangling the carrot in front of all these teachers and parents and telling them that we're going to open up if we're not going to, you know, be able to accept any risk mitigation and we're not going to be able to accept, you know, making modifications and having faith in our staff and Dr. Benson, that they can come up with something that they're comfortable with. And we're not hearing, but only from a handful or so of people saying that they're not comfortable. So that tells me that we have a majority of our staff that are comfortable with the plan that we had in place. You know, until we can get to that point, you know, I, I don't think that it's fair to anybody to say that we're going to do anything.
Ms. Panzera, I disagree that, that we have not heard from people. We have heard from, I believe, the vast majority of staff who are saying they are not only not comfortable, but they have great, serious concerns about it.
So we have 605 staff members. And of the 605 staff members, we had 142 that said, I am not comfortable coming back in the survey. Also in those staff members, we've had multiple, yes, I will admit, we have multiple emails. There's multiple emails that come from the same people. We have some people that have sent dozens of emails or a dozen emails or letters. It's the same people that we hear every night. And then even when we had, you know, the most attendance of our, of our meetings, it was a majority of the people wanted to return. So how can we sit here and say that they don't want to return? It's their parents and the staff members, it's their option and their decision and their choice as to what risk, you know, they're willing to take. And I think that the surveys and everything that we've done is saying that everybody wants to be back in school.
So Ms. Panzera, I've said this before, um, no, I, I think I started.
No, I, I, I waited for Mrs. Hawke, but go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay, so I think, why, yes, we have heard from parents and we have heard from teachers, but to, to our, you know, in an ordinary, you know, giving people choices, so we can give families choices and we have done that. I think that would continue to be a part of the plan going forward that would be built upon the work that has been done by Dr. Benson and staff. But in an ordinary world, families don't get a, what, you know, you, you know, you don't get to like fill out a form at the beginning of the year and choose what your child's education looks like. You sign up to go to a public school and attend King George County Schools and you, you are, you receive a King George County education. And we as a board are here to help support that, right? So, but by prioritizing only parents, which I do not, I mean, we obviously, we represent families and communities, but we rely on teachers to be able to provide that service to our students. And in essence, by not heeding the very passionate and very concerned and very stressed out, taking prescription medication teachers that are sending us repeated emails, we are therefore doing a disservice to our constituents because we are not providing, going to be able to provide them with the service that we owe them.
So.
So go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So, you know, the, the motion was amended to a safe, when, when it's safe. So some of the things that I, I brought forth, asked Dr. Benson to look at. So if you were going to go to the hospital, would you feel safe going to the hospital because they mitigated at where they are treating COVID-19 people? So people, no, that's just a statement. But so people want to send their children to school and we have made it, or we're, with all these things in play, we're making it safer than a hospital. Hospitals don't do all this. So again, you know, yes, when, when your child goes, signs up to go to school in King George County, they expect a King George County education. So there's a bunch of them that aren't getting it. So we just say, tough luck, you're the, um, you know, socioeconomic advantage and so on and so forth, you're out of luck. Only the other ones can get it.
So no, I do not believe we say tough, you're out of luck, you say, in order for us to continue to provide you with that King George County education you were expecting, we have to respect the educators who are providing that education. And to, and to, and to the point previously made about the risk mitigation and how, when will it really be safe? I personally do not believe where there will be a clear point in time where everyone is going to say, oh, this is it, it is safe. There, there are, you know, we, there's been a continual for months, a question of when is the, what, what is the criteria for sending us back to school? I personally don't really believe there's going to be a hard line in the sand that says, this is when we're ready. I mean, you know, we've talked about this back in March, oh, well, schools, you know, I mean, like, you, you know, personally in our lives, right? Like, when are we going to return to normal? Well, we still, here we are and now even more people are wearing masks, right? Like, things have changed and I don't think there's going to be a point which is safe, but what we have, what we can do is help make sure that there is a plan that makes people feel. people feel safe so that when students and families make those decisions, they can make them based on the fact, no, Mr. Collins, I do not believe that this plan is the final answer. And so the mitigation strategies are, have started, again, I'm super, I'm so, I continue to be so encouraged by these conversations, like the Honeywell presentation we had earlier about the, the ion, like the bipolar, like, that's the stuff we're doing. You heard her say that other schools have been doing this months ago, like, we're maybe a little bit behind the curve, but we are on the right track and those are the mitigation strategies. And Mr. Collins, you yourself brought them up last week and I thought that was awesome and here we are talking about it, but we can't just go back to school while we're still working out the details.
So, the, the information was brought forward to mitigate the employee concerns, not, not the, not the public's concern, the public concern is they want to go back to school and they were okay without all these other things.
Well
I, I, I haven't heard anybody ask me for those three things other than employees.
I heard, I heard parents comment and make recommendations on air purification products.
Yes, I heard one, Mr. Greggin or whatever his name was, that's
He's one, he's one.
That's all I heard.
There were none, he was one.
So, Ms. Tolliver, go ahead, please.
So, I don't, a couple of things, I don't think that 34-page plan addresses ventilation and all these other things we're talking about, it does do a lot and Ms. Fisher did a lot of work and it's awesome, but I think we have a plan, I don't think we have the resources to safely implement, implement that plan. I'm still concerned about staffing, I still think there's some classrooms that are going to have 18 kids in person, 30 virtual. I think we still need to keep the building safe for staff and clean for staff and there are students in the buildings, there are special education students being served in the buildings who need to be safe and have things clean and disinfected for them. The students you mentioned, Mr. Collins, can still be served. I think we can reach out to those who are in a situation where they're not being successful and can be served in, in other ways. And the ones that you're talking about are, are not the ones going back. You mentioned high school and middle school and we're sending back K to two kids, so I don't really see much, I think that, that doesn't really match that argument.
I haven't got the numbers for that.
I'm just, well, I'm just saying that you keep bringing that up, that we are not serving certain students, but those aren't the ones that we're, we're talking about sending back. And again, as far as the money goes, we work with the Board of Supervisors, we don't work for them and I realize that they allotted us that money for certain things that we used it for, hotspots and PPE and whatever we had to purchase for whenever kids go back to school. I don't think they said they have to go back by this date or we're going to take the money back. So, and again, we don't work for them, we're an equal body, we've worked with them cooperatively and we've done that well and we can continue to do that, but I don't, the comments about they're going to take our money back is just, to me, is absurd and I don't think that can happen at this point because we are using the money for what we said we were going to use it for. I think that's all I have right now.
Well, and you know, I, I, I'm still a little confused because, you know, we, we've had teachers that have stood up and, you know, they've stepped up to the plate and they've made these changes, they've accepted the change and they've gone out and they've done it. And it's still only, you know, a, a small amount of teachers that we have heard from so negatively about starting back. And, you know, I mean, if we want to look at it, we have 600 and some teachers and we have 4,000 students and I, I can equate that to maybe being, let's say, 2 to 3,000 families. I mean, think about what they're going through, think about how many people, how many times they have to change their plans, you know, you know, some of us are fortunate that we have good jobs where we can telework and we can take care of our kids and we can, you know, we can actually be engaged with our kids' education. There's so many people out there that they can't do that, they have to go work, they can't telework, they have to go out and work. And, you know, now they're not able to do that and they've made plans, they've made plans for, for them to go back to work and to do what they can and now here we are again, three days before we're going to say that we're going to do it and we're telling them, sorry, you can't go and take your job. I mean, you know, and as far as teachers having, being medicated, I'm sure there's a lot of other people out there being medicated and I'm sure that the children are the ones that we have to focus on and really understand what is it, you know, how are they, you know, going to be reacting to this? And what is the long-term effects of them not being in school and not receiving that education and not having that type of normalcy? Now, I, I think at the end of the day, the teachers are important, you know, in my book, they're heroes. I think the students are heroes because, you know, they have, they've all sacrificed without complaint for the majority of them, there's some that have been complaining, but, you know, they, they've made the sacrifice for others, you know, so that they, let me stop, the, the, the teachers and the students both are heroes because they have unselfishly, with majority of them without complaint, have sacrificed, you know, something that would positively affect other students. And I think that that is amazing and for us to pull it out and say, you know, I don't think that that's good enough now is, is a tragedy.
I'd, I'd like to make a, a comment that I don't believe that what we are offering our students is in any way a return to normalcy. I, I regret that it's not, I, I don't think we, even if we had all the resources in the world, we couldn't make this a normal situation. We have done everything and the teachers have, have done everything that we've asked them to do and more, but at, at this point, we, I don't believe are ready to have our youngest students in the building, although I, I think we are on the way to integrating a phased-in plan, these are all steps in the right direction. But I, I think it would be irresponsible to say that we're there yet and so I, that's the reason for my motion.
So we just keep making motions till we wear somebody down and, and you get your way. That's, you know, two motions and a discussion and now another motion and none of them were on the agenda. So you just keep making motions until you, no, there was, there was two motions, the in-person and the planned and now we're on a third motion and, so I guess in the future I should just keep making motions until I get my way.
I will point out, Mr. Collins, I think you have done that a couple of weeks ago, you, you made a motion to send everyone back five days a week and then
No, it's, it's okay, we don't need to argue about that. I mean, we can make motions, Robert rules, even though we don't have not officially, you know, adopted Robert rules, says that you can make an emotion at any point in time and any, or anything, anybody can make a motion, you can make it during public comment or, I mean, anytime. So I don't think that we need to go on and discuss that. The motion has been made, I think that it's, it's evident that, you know, it's, it is what it is and, and I guess we just need to vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion to rescind the childcare that we did last week. We're not going to have people in school, they won't need the childcare and if they do need the childcare, it's two-thirds.
Excuse me, let him finish talking, thank you.
Well, if you're doing virtual, where are you doing it from?
Class I second, excuse me, can we have the, motion has been stated, I second the motion, now we can open for discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Tolliver.
Teachers are able to teach from their classrooms.
So is there any way that the teachers can't teach from their classrooms? One of the issues that I have, you know, I, I, I've supported this, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of parents out there that have to work and also help their student or, you know, their child get through their classes and they're suffering from that. And, you know, so, I mean, I think it's great, I'd love to be able to offer everything for our teachers, but, you know, I, I think at some point in time, there's a little bit of fairness here and, and I, I just don't think that, you know, I think that teachers can have their students within their classroom with them, we can make an allowance for that, I think that that would save us quite a bit of money. Go ahead, Ms. Tolliver. Anybody else?
I would agree because we are asking our teachers to be professionals and yes, there's a day dedicated to, to take your child to work, but it's not every day. And our teachers, our educators, our counselors are focused on providing the best situation they can in a virtual setting. I see it daily and I see them work individually with students, I see them solving problems of the sorts that, that they really didn't imagine. I think the childcare situation is, is a revenge move and I, I don't think that's worthy of us.
Ms. Hawke, with all due respect, I, I don't think that anybody up here is trying to make a motion out of revenge or spite. I mean, I think that even though we don't agree, I think that, you know, all of us are up here for a reason and I think the biggest reason is for the love of the children. I, I, I'm sorry, but I strongly disagree with that.
I apologize.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Well
Yes, Ms. Gonzalez.
So I, I disagree, I don't understand why we would, we would rescind childcare for teachers, we voted on, not even, but we have supported this and provided the service for teachers for the first quarter, the first half of the semester and there was, that was for good reason, I don't understand why we would consider not continuing it.
Well, we, we voted on it for, because they were going to start in-person. Also, have you been to the childcare? I mean, they're less than three feet apart and all the things that we're, we're talking that we're now, the reason why I don't want to go back to school is occurring there and we don't want to, if that's the case, we don't want, want the employees' children to be in jeopardy either. So I had to come up with a different plan on that.
I've actually heard the complete opposite, that this, that the childcare provided in the schools has been able to provide ample virtual distancing, which makes it a different category than having students in the classrooms.
Right, so we have two motions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Nays have it, motion does not carry. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We hadn't, we, we just finished our discussion items.
I'm not really sure that we, okay, so we have a motion and it's been seconded, so we can open it up for discussion. I don't really think that we have anything else to say. I mean, at this point in time, we're not going to be able to go back to school in January, we can't give our, our, our families and our students a false perception that that's going to be able to happen. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what all we have to do other than to plan.
So with all due respect, Ms. Madam Chair, I certainly don't think we're going to return to school in January with an attitude of that sort to adjourn our meeting prematurely because we don't feel like discussing the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which I think we've just discussed, is, we're in plan, the planning phase and the, discussing how our Coronavirus Relief Funds get spent are a major part of the plan, so I don't understand why
You're absolutely right, but at this point in time, you know, there's a lot of funds that we're not going to be able to use and until we have an idea of what we're going to do in our plan and how we're going to use that money and how it's going to be beneficial as to what our plan is and if we're not going to go back in January, you know, I think that we really need to kind of figure out what we're going to be planning on and then how we're going to do that money, how we're going to spend that money.
So I don't recall any discussion of not returning in January, I think everyone's objective is to have a plan to execute in January and I believe further discussion of the Coronavirus Relief Fund as previously planned on our agenda is a part of getting to that point in time.
I seconded prematurely, I didn't realize we still had something on discussion.
All right, so
We still need to figure out how we're going to spend the money because eventually we're going to, we're, we're making a plan right now to try to send them back safely, so we need to figure out how to spend that money, that's what we're doing now is planning.
So are we really going to be able to come up with a, an affirmative thing of what's going to be, you know, safely? I, I mean, you know, I don't know that, that, that's the thing that is really kind of eating at me right now is for us to be able to decide what that actually looks like, because Ms. Tolliver, I do believe that you said, you know, several times, it's when we have 0% of cases and I, I don't see that ever happening.
On what I said, and I said that you
So, we haven't even made a motion to accept the $777,000. Right now you have a motion for adjournment.
Well, okay, so let's vote on it, maybe I did do it a little bit prematurely, I'm just a little bit aggravated and disappointed in all of us, so
I didn't vote.
I know, so I'm going to go ahead and say, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nays win it, okay, so we're not adjourned, let's continue.
That was it, I just wanted to make sure that we've had an opportunity, you had an opportunity, Madam Chair, members of the board, to consider that our school division, like other school divisions in Virginia, have been plotted for the receipt of $777,455 in additional COVID-19 relief funding from the state. To utilize that funding though, requires motion from the board to accept that funding, that grant from the state, so I'd kind of consider the board, consider an approval motion to accept the Coronavirus Relief Fund award in that amount, $777,455 from the state. We need an approved motion from just forces that the county financial office set up an account from which then expenditures should be
Would we accept $777,455 in Coronavirus Relief Fund?
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we'll accept the Additional Cares Act money.
And lastly, I would, lastly, I provided for you, there was a question at an earlier meeting about COVID-related revenue streams and how much money remained in those.
Like the third slide coming up here?
There you go, I, I tried to answer that question for you and I apologize, last meeting I talked to the board about, and earlier tonight I referenced how each of these funds have a time restriction on them as far as when they must be spent, so I thought I'd try to clarify that, not only for the board but for our public, that everybody understands that there are different revenue streams that have been awarded our school division. We've mentioned tonight, the county cares, the county cares with the amount awarded to the county, the Board of Supervisors considered a request from the schools and approved that amount for the schools. You can see there then expenditures that have been made against that allotment from the county, all of those expenditures have been in line with the purpose that we requested, for which we requested the funding from the county supervisors. Next is a GEAR grant, has gotten less publicity, but the GEAR was an application and a competitive grant, submitted a, a grant application to the state, we were awarded $98,000 in GEAR grant funding specifically to help support the connectivity as far as hotspots and to also support food service efforts that are ongoing in our county. Tonight we've talked about CRF funding, we're referring to the Coronavirus Relief Fund, that does have a spend, as does the GEAR, that has a 1231 spend by date that I've noted there for you and you can see expenditures that have been applied against that, that fund thus far. And then lastly is the school cares and again, I've tried to ensure that expenditures are first tallied against the time-bound funds, as a school division, we're, we're, we're being good stewards and we're being responsible and utilizing leverage for the flexibility so that we can address the future, address future needs using the school cares since we have until 2022, spend that amount. But I, I just thought I'd clarify that because I think I just said it verbally last meeting and it may have been confusing, not just to the board but to our public, so I wanted to make that clarification for you. And I don't, I'm not asking that you decide how to spend that funding, we'll certainly bring you recommendations, but your input that we've gotten tonight will help and guide how we can best utilize that funding to support our efforts. So take pressure off of you, the implication is not that you have to create a plan to kind of spend that, we'll certainly bring recommendations to you, but again, your input is helpful in guiding Lastly, I want to mention that this Wednesday will be our first reconvene of the task force that's looking at options for, for bringing students back. So once I have that, I'll be able to canvas each of those subcommittees and put together then the update that you all have requested for next meeting that voted of that group. Thank you, as always, for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have any discussions? Okay. So do we have any discussion on the revenue sources? So, Dr. Benson, everything under the King George County Cares funding that needs to be spent by 12/1, has that already been expended?
Everything listed there has been expended.
Except for the $186,000?
That's correct. Those are expenditures completed. If there, you know, I put this together Friday for your, Thursday.
Are there any additional new or replaced Chromebooks that, that you foresee we're going to need any time in the near future? I thought we were still short a few.
Well, certainly we'll need replacements as Chromebooks expire, if they're not, you have to replace. But I'm not sure I understand fully. You're talking about an immediate, I think we've ordered what we believe we need for the immediate year.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Again, we're hopeful they come in. That's the other aspect that we're trying to clarify, the actual, everybody's struggling because Chromebooks are in high demand, a lot of technology items are high demand, but in short supply. So things have been backordered. School divisions, not just us, are waiting for things to arrive.
So then ideally, for what we talked about today, as far as the, the HVAC systems, the additional cleaning and all of that, I mean, if we're not going to be opening the schools anytime soon, I'm, I'm not sure that that is funding that we would need to try to get done by the end of the year. Is that what you're thinking still? Are we still going to try to move into that direction? Obviously, the cleaning is not something that's going to be needed.
I'm not sure I understand.
The items that we talked about, the air quality enhancement, the supplemental cleaning, and employee testing for COVID and all of that, how does that fit? Those items are not in this COVID revenue sources. So.
Not yet, only because they've not yet, we've obviously not expended funds for those yet. So they're not in this particular listing.
Correct.
But you could certainly address those funding if available.
So I guess that's what I'm kind of opening it up to the board. I mean, I think we need to decide, is, if this is something that we're going to move forward. If we're not opening up our schools until, it's not going to happen in January, I'm, I'm quite certain, because that's the peak of the flu season. We can't do it now. I don't know how we can do it then. So at what point in time are we going to be able to say that, you know, these things we want to move forward with, or we don't want to move forward with and have it done by the end of the year?
I'll be bringing, I'll do the homework that I mentioned earlier, as far as bringing a refined proposal from Honeywell with a refined number for you at your next meeting. And then I'll also do the very same at the meeting. There was some, there was some clarification wanted there.
So I think the deep cleaning and also the materials, whether or not the, the supplies, if their number included the supplies or not?
No, it was the.
And then the deep cleaning.
Employee testing. You'd ask.
Employee testing.
What would be an appropriate number. For those two, at least, you could certainly consider next time, or I would expect you, if you would want to consider when you have a better number for those two. At least, I don't know about the supplies and the, the cleaning, I think is, is fairly straightforward for everybody.
Okay. Any other questions?
Close meeting.
I think we had one. No. Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I say move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.